Alderman Clark.
Here.
Alderman Mayberry.
Here.
Alderman Spaghetti.
Present.
Alderman Talonair.
Here.
Alderman Parker.
Here.
Alderman Ship.
Here.
Mayor Tomes.
Here.
You have a quorum. Also, Alderman Geenan notified the city through City Clerk Judith Gilbert that he would not be physically present for the meeting due to a work commitment out of town and made a request to participate remotely per city ordinance.
Move to allow Alderman Geenan to participate in the council meeting remotely.
Second.
Moved to second. Any discussion on it? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Opposed.
Thank you. Dave, I assume you're there?
Yeah.
All right. We'd like to do the Pledge Allegiance and then followed by moment of silence.
Our one allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you very much. All right, item number five.
Minutes of the July 9, 2018, meeting.
Move to approve the minutes as printed.
Second.
Moved to second. Any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Pass. Item number six.
Minutes of the executive session of July 9, 2018.
Move to approve the executive session minutes as printed.
Second.
Moved in second. Any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Carries. Item seven, updates. We have a few of them. Starlight Review Concert Series Tuesday, July 24, 2018. The Review Concert Series will continue with the Hot Rods at 7:00 PM in beautiful Lincoln Park along with the Dance Lessons starting at 6:30 PM. Make a night of it and enjoy food and drink for purchase from Hy-Vee Grill starting at 5:00 PM. Call the rain line at (309) 732-7246 after 3:30 PM on Tuesday to check the status of the event and inclement weather. Last time I looked, it should be a beautiful evening. Community Conversations. The Rock Island Library will host two coffee and community conversations aimed at gaining public input on how it can meet primary objectives. The public is invited to attend the strategic planning meeting either tomorrow, July 24, at the downtown library community room at 6:00 PM to 7:30 PM, or on Thursday, July 26, at the southwest branch located at 9010 Ridge Wood Road from 2:00 PM to 3:30 PM. Art in the Garden. The Quad City Botanical Center will host its second annual Art in the Garden Party. This is a day full of art, music, food trucks, and gardens that you do not want to miss. The event will be held at the Botanical Center at 2525 Fourth Avenue in Rock Island on August 11, 2018, from 10:00 AM to 4:00 PM. Cost for adult is $8 and $4 for the youth and members. For information, please call (309) 794-0991, extension 203. Labor Day Parade Registration. Boy, the years moving right along here. Call all families, schools, churches, organizations, clubs, and businesses. The 34th Annual Rock Island Labor Day Parade is scheduled for Monday, September 3, 2018. Registration forms, due dates, themes, and more information can be found at www.rigov.org. The first Labor Day Parade was held in 1985 as part of Rock Island's 150th birthday. Over the past 30-plus years, the parade has grown to an average of 150 entries and has become a popular event that draws thousands of spectators. Get your organization entered so citizens can see your name in a unique way. And that's it for today. Item number eight.
Proclamation declaring August 7, 2018, as National Night Out.
I don't know if there's anybody here. Oh, yeah, there she is. All right, we'll read this. Whereas the National Association of Town Watch, N-A-T-W, and locally, the Community Carrying Conference are sponsoring a unique nationwide crime, drug, and violence prevention program on August 7, 2018, entitled National Night Out. And whereas, the 35th Annual National Night Out provides a unique opportunity for the city of Rock Island to join forces with thousands of other communities across the country in promoting cooperative police-community crime prevention efforts. And whereas, the city of Rock Island Police Department plays a vital role in assisting joint crime and drug and violence prevention efforts in Rock Island and is supporting National Night Out 2018 locally. And the whereas, it is essential that all citizens of Rock Island be aware of the importance of the crime prevention programs and impact that their participation can have on reducing crime, drugs, and violence in Rock Island. And whereas, police, community, partnership, neighborhood, safety, awareness, and cooperation are important themes of the National Night Out program. Now therefore, I, Mike Tomes, Mayor of the city of Rock Island, Illinois, do hereby proclaim Tuesday, August 7, 2018, as National Night Out.
Thank you so much.
Please, you want to speak a little bit about it?
Just a little bit. Wait a minute, he's got to get out.
Oh, you want to picture her?
Yes, please.
One again?
He can excuse me.
Yeah. All right. All right. All right. Yeah. I'm going to do a well. Perfect. Thank you, Mayor. Your best shirt stops since Ozzy Smith.
I'd like to thank you so very much, Councilman and Mayor. I just have to add that this is the 35th year for the National Night Out. CCC has been an organization for over 41 years, and we have been involved with the whole 35 years, and we're so proud of that. And we want this to be the largest celebration. We want the people to come out, family event, and I've already been getting phone calls even from Senator Duckworth's office and Houghton's office to say how important this event is. This event this year, of course, going to be with the drill team, the Metro Drill Team will be there. And of course, we in partnership with the police department, the sheriff's department, the fire department, everyone's going to be there. And schools, the community, the block clubs, and we have been working very hard the last two years since we have started CCC over again. And my goal for this year was adding only five more new block clubs. Last year, we got 10, well, 12, and we added five more. My numbers have passed that. So far, we have added 10 new block clubs this year, and the year is not even over with. And I owe it to the Aldermen. I owe thanks to the police department, the fire department, Mr. Chandler Poole, he just the first one there and the last one to leave at each one, and so it is making such a big difference. When the concerns are brought to them, within one week, it's been solved. And the block club and the people, they so excited, so that's why the phone calls are steady coming in. And this family event, it is aimed to encourage the residents to be visible and active, active in your neighborhoods, and to communicate effectively with the law enforcement to fight the crime. I want to thank you all so much, and come on down and share the news, share the news. Rock Island, we love you. Thank you.
Thank you. No enthusiasm there, is there? That's great. All right, item number nine.
Mayor Tomes will close the regular meeting and open a public hearing for comments on the city of Rock Island's Program Year 2018 HUD-CDBG Annual Action Plan.
Okay, hereby close the regular meeting and open a public hearing. Actually, we need to entertain a motion. No, actually, that's afterwards, excuse me. Going, jumping ahead. Is there Chandler or anybody got to talk about this, or?
This is the second public hearing required for the passage of the Annual Action Plan. As you see, we've done a number of things. We started a 30-day public comment and review June 4. We held the first public hearing on June 25. On July 9, we did a presentation, staff presentation, the study council. Then July 10, we did a kind of a work session. And tonight is the July 23, second hearing, public hearing for the action plan. This allows us then to go forward to HUD and make the application for annual allotment.
Very good. Anybody have any questions? Chandler on it? Talked about it. Is there anybody else out in the public that out there in the stands would like to speak about the, this plan? Any comments? Okay, hearing none. I guess we'll close the public meeting and reconvene the regular meeting.
Thanks for your job, Chandler.
And entertain a motion.
Entertain a motion.
Move. Move to approve the 2018 Annual Action Plan for submission to CPD Region 5 for review and approval as necessary, or as recommended.
Second.
Moved to second. Any discussion on this? Hearing none. Roll call, please.
Alderman Geenan.
Yeah.
Clark.
Aye.
Mayberry.
Yes.
Spaghetti.
Yes.
Talonair.
Yes.
Parker.
Aye.
Ship.
Aye.
Seven ayes, no nays. Motion carried.
Item number 10.
An ordinance approving the city of Rock Island, Illinois Tax Increment Financing District Redevelopment Plan, Sentry Woods Tax Increment Financing District, second reading.
Move to pass the ordinance.
Second.
Moved in second. Is there any discussion? Hearing none. Roll call, please.
Alderman Geenan.
Aye.
Clark.
Aye.
Mayberry.
Aye.
Spaghetti.
Yes.
Talonair.
No.
Parker.
No.
Ship.
Aye.
Five ayes, two nays. Motion carried.
Item number 11.
An ordinance designating the proposed Sentry Woods Tax Increment Financing District pursuant to the Tax Increment Allocation Redevelopment Act, second reading.
Move to pass the ordinance.
Second.
Moved in second. Any discussion? Hearing none. Roll call, please.
Alderman Geenan.
Aye.
Clark.
Aye.
Mayberry.
Aye.
Spaghetti.
Yes.
Talonair.
No.
Parker.
No.
Ship.
Aye.
Five ayes, two nays. Motion carried.
Item number 12.
An ordinance adopting tax increment allocation financing for the Sentry Woods Tax Increment Financing District, second reading.
Move to pass the ordinance.
Second.
Moved in second. Any discussion? Hearing none. Roll call, please.
Alderman Geenan.
Aye.
Clark.
Aye.
Mayberry.
Aye.
Spaghetti.
Yes.
Talonair.
No.
Parker.
No.
Ship.
Aye.
Five ayes, two nays. Motion carried.
Item 13.
An ordinance approving the city of Rock Island, Illinois Tax Increment Financing District Redevelopment Plan, Heather Ridge Tax Increment Financing District, second reading.
Motion to pass the ordinance. Second.
Moved in second. Any discussion? Hearing none. Roll call.
Alderman Geenan.
Aye.
Clark.
Aye.
Mayberry.
Aye.
Spaghetti.
Yes.
Talonair.
No.
Parker.
No.
Ship.
Aye.
Five ayes, two nays. Motion carried.
Item 14.
An ordinance designating the proposed Heather Ridge Tax Increment Financing District pursuant to the Tax Increment Allocation Redevelopment Act, second reading.
Motion to pass the ordinance. Second.
Moved in second. Any discussion? Hearing none. Roll call, please.
Alderman Geenan.
Aye.
Clark.
Aye.
Mayberry.
Aye.
Spaghetti.
Yes.
Talonair.
No.
Parker.
No.
Ship.
Aye.
Five ayes, two nays. Motion carried.
Item 15.
An ordinance adopting tax increment allocation financing for the Heather Ridge Tax Increment Financing District, second reading.
Motion to pass the ordinance. Second.
Moved in second. Any discussion? Hearing none. Roll call.
Alderman Geenan.
Aye.
Clark.
Aye.
Mayberry.
Aye.
Spaghetti.
Yes.
Talonair.
No.
Parker.
No.
Ship.
Aye.
Five ayes, two nays. Motion carried.
Item 16.
A special ordinance amending a zoning district and zoning map at approximately 4040 79th Avenue West.
Motion to consider suspend the rules and pass the ordinance.
Second.
Moved in second. Any discussion? Roll call.
Alderman Geenan.
Aye.
Clark.
Aye.
Mayberry.
Aye.
Spaghetti.
Yes.
Talonair.
Yes.
Parker.
Aye.
Ship.
Aye.
Seven ayes, no nays. Motion carried.
Item 17.
A special ordinance establishing a handicap parking space at 612 Sixth Street.
Move to consider suspend the rules and pass the ordinance. Second.
Moved in second. Any discussion? Roll call.
Alderman Geenan.
Yeah.
Clark.
Aye.
Mayberry.
Aye.
Spaghetti.
Yes.
Talonair.
Yes.
Parker.
Aye.
Ship.
Aye.
Seven ayes, no nays. Motion carried.
Item 18.
A special ordinance limiting parking in front of the business located at 1323 to 1329 Second Avenue to one-hour parking between the hours of 8:00 AM and 5:00 PM Monday through Friday.
Move to consider suspend the rules and pass the ordinance. Second.
Moved in second. Any discussion? Roll call.
Alderman Geenan.
Alderman Geenan. Aye.
Clark.
Aye.
Mayberry.
Aye.
Spaghetti.
Yes.
Talonair.
Yes.
Parker.
Aye.
Ship.
Aye.
Seven ayes, no nays. Motion carried.
Item 19.
A special ordinance establishing alley traffic control restrictions of no parking, standing, or stopping in the alley located between 34th and 35th Streets running north and south between 18th to 20th Avenues.
Move to consider suspend the rules and pass the ordinance.
Second.
Moved in second. Any discussion? Roll call.
Alderman Geenan.
Aye.
Clark.
Aye.
Mayberry.
Aye.
Spaghetti.
Yes.
Talonair.
Yes.
Parker.
Aye.
Ship.
Aye.
Seven ayes, no nays. Motion carried.
Item 20.
A special ordinance removing a parking lot located at 2118th Avenue from being under city ordinance control.
Move to consider suspend the rules and pass the ordinance.
Second.
Moved in second. Any discussion? Roll call.
Alderman Geenan.
Aye.
Clark.
Aye.
Mayberry.
Aye.
Spaghetti.
Yes.
Talonair.
Yes.
Parker.
Aye.
Ship.
Aye.
Seven ayes, no nays. Motion carried.
Item 21.
Claims A and B. A, report from the Human Resources Department regarding payment in the amount of $9,742.44 to Westfield Insurance of Westfield Center, Ohio for general liability claim. And B, report from the Public Works Department regarding payment in the amount of $67,500 to the Illinois Environmental Protection Agency of Springfield, Illinois for annual fees for NPDES permits.
Motion to accept the reports and authorize payment as recommended for claims items A and B.
Second.
Moved in second. Any discussion? Roll call.
Alderman Geenan.
Aye.
Clark.
Aye.
Mayberry.
Aye.
Spaghetti.
Yes.
Talonair.
Yes.
Parker.
Aye.
Ship.
Aye.
Seven ayes, no nays. Motion carried.
Item 22.
Claims for the weeks of July 6 through July 12 in the amount of $1,701,037.39 and July 13 through July 18 in the amount of $544,655.04 in payroll for the weeks of July 2 through July 15 in the amount of $1,535,574.05.
Move to allow the claims and payroll. Second.
Moved in second. Any discussion? Roll call.
Alderman Geenan.
Aye.
Clark.
Aye.
Mayberry.
Aye.
Spaghetti.
Yes.
Talonair.
Yes.
Parker.
Aye.
Ship.
Aye.
Seven ayes, no nays. Motion carried.
Item 23.
ACH payments for the month of June in the amount of $4,379,675.61.
Move to approve the ACH payments.
Second.
Moved in second. Any discussion? Roll call.
Alderman Geenan.
Aye.
Clark.
Aye.
Mayberry.
Aye.
Spaghetti.
Yes.
Talonair.
Yes.
Parker.
Aye.
Ship.
Aye.
Seven ayes, no nays. Motion carried.
Item 24.
Purchase card claims for the period from May 30, 2018, through June 26, 2018, in the amount of $74,385.18.
Move to approve the purchase card claims.
Second.
Moved in second. Any discussion? Roll call.
Alderman Geenan.
Aye.
Clark.
Aye.
Mayberry.
Aye.
Spaghetti.
Yes.
Talonair.
Yes.
Parker.
Aye.
Ship.
Aye.
Seven ayes, no nays. Motion carried.
Item 25.
Report from General Administration regarding an agreement with Polco for a citizen engagement platform in the amount of $8,000 through the end of 2019.
Move to approve the agreement as recommended and authorize the city manager to execute the contract documents subject to minor attorney modifications.
Second.
Moved in second. Any discussion?
Yes, Mr. Mayor, could someone explain for the general public what Polco is and where they're located, please?
They're located out of Wisconsin, so it's an agency that specializes in community interactions, so they develop some software that's specifically for municipalities to interact with citizens and allow citizen input on whatever issue we really want to put out there. And it provides a lot of information, like what ward they're from, instead of just a general, you know, here's what people think. It's very detailed, so it's better for analysis.
I understood, but I wanted to make sure the people did. Thank you.
Yeah, is there going to be, I imagine, some sort of rolling the product out, educating residents how to participate?
There is, and we're working with Jay Wild Consulting on that. And it'll take a little while, we've got to go through some training on this, but probably sometime in August will be the official rollout, assuming it's approved tonight.
Very cool. I'm very excited and appreciative of staff for identifying this opportunity and pursuing it. Involving the residents of Rock Island is always a priority of mine, and getting their feedback and input on issues that we vote on is very important for our democracy. Thank you.
Roll call.
Alderman Geenan.
Aye.
Clark.
Aye.
Mayberry.
Aye.
Spaghetti.
Yes.
Talonair.
Yes.
Parker.
Aye.
Ship.
Aye.
Seven ayes, no nays. Motion carried.
26.
Report from General Administration regarding a memorandum of agreement with Augustana College Upper Mississippi Center for Sustainable Communities for a two-year partnership through its Sustainable Working Landscape Initiative.
Move to approve the memorandum of agreement as recommended and authorize the city manager to sign the agreement subject to minor attorney modifications.
Second.
Moved in second. Any discussion?
Just, thank you to Augustana College for partnering with the city of Rock Island and offering to take on some of these really exciting studies. take on some of these really exciting studies. I'm very much looking forward to the results and appreciate their partnership. And thank you to city staff for making it happen.
Yeah, I just want to, for those who are here in the audience or watching at home, we have a tentative list of projects that this partnership could accomplish, and those include a contractor diversity study, so looking at the contractors the city's employing its services for, parks, naturalized areas, employee satisfac- satisfaction survey, traffic crash analysis, residential assistance program review, community gardens slash food deserts, refugee immigrant engagement, enhanced community communications, Martin Luther King Center, police department community survey, survey to address needs in that regard, and music to bridge communities. So, a really good list of projects that could do some real good for this community, so I'm really excited to see this happen.
Okay, very good. Roll call.
Alderman Genin.
Aye.
Clark. Mayberry.
Aye.
Spaghetti.
Yes.
Talonair.
Yes.
Parker.
Aye.
Ship.
Aye.
Seven ayes, no nays. Motion carried.
Item twenty-seven.
Report from the Public Works Department regarding an amended lease agreement for the Sunset Marina apartment.
Move to approve the lease agreement as written and recommended and authorize the city manager to execute the lease agreement.
Second. Moving to second. Any discussion?
Yeah, Randy or Larry, kind of tangential to this issue, thinking about the talks with F3. Just curious how things have progressed and, and if there would actually be any change to this lease agreement if that, if we struck a deal with them to manage the Marina.
No, there'd be no change to the lease agreement because the city still owns the property itself, so the apartment still retains under city jurisdiction.
Okay.
So, we've talked to the leaseholder. She's perfectly fine with potential management change. Spoke with F3 Marinas, and they're well aware of the tenant that's living there as well, so there's no anticipated changes whatsoever.
Okay.
In regards to F3 Marina, we're reviewing the draft contract. We've already discussed with F3 some potential changes, and they're working on sending back a second draft to us now.
Okay, so we're still kind of going down that road?
We are, absolutely.
Okay, good deal.
Good. Roll call, please.
Alderman Genin.
Aye.
Clark.
Aye.
Mayberry.
Aye.
Spaghetti.
Yes.
Talonair.
Yes.
Parker.
Aye.
Ship.
Aye.
Seven ayes, no nays. Motion carried.
Item twenty-eight.
Report from the Community and Economic Development Department regarding the sale of city-owned property at twenty-two hundred First Street to Barbara Bernhour for one dollar plus closing costs.
Motion to approve purchase agreement as recommended, authorize city manager to execute the contract documents, and consider suspend the rules and adopt ordinance.
Second. Moving to second. Any discussion? Roll call.
Alderman Genin.
Aye.
Clark.
Aye.
Mayberry.
Aye.
Spaghetti.
Yes.
Talonair.
Yes.
Parker.
Aye.
Ship.
Aye.
Seven ayes, no nays. Motion carried.
Item twenty-nine.
Report from the Community and Economic Development Department regarding the sale of city-owned property at forty-five oh six Fifth Avenue to Joshua Ship for one dollar plus closing costs.
Move to approve the purchase agreement as recommended, authorize the city manager to execute the contract documents, and consider suspend the rules and adopt the ordinance.
Second. Moving to second. Any discussion?
I believe it would be prudent for me to abstain from this vote.
Really?
I want to say, though, I have really been, as, putting on my private citizen hat, very appreciative of the city. For five years, I've been at the site as a community gardener. I'm very proud to have the opportunity, hopefully, to inherit the property as its owner. I think it's really done a lot of good in that part of the Columbia Park of the Keystone neighborhood as sort of a focal point for the homes that all kind of see the garden. I've gotten a lot of people out of their homes to come over and help out, and I've got some people on that land with me now gardening sections of it, and it's just been a really cool experience to get out there and connect with people. So, just a testament to that the program really does connect people and neighbors and puts a vacant piece of land to good use.
Can we put a few zeros on this for tax reasons?
Can we, can we talk about a private loan?
Roll call, please.
Hold on, just for, just for clarification, for the previous, for this and the next vote, these are parcels that are considered too small for development, for housing or business, primarily currently being used as community gardens and no reason for them to stay on the city's payroll. So, that, for those that have not been following this and those watching at home, that is what this is about, is we're unloading some of the arguably undevelopable, undevelopable properties that the city's been holding on to for some time and giving them, or selling them to residents.
Very good. Good explanation. All right, roll call.
Alderman Genin.
Aye.
Clark.
Aye.
Mayberry.
Aye.
Spaghetti.
Yes.
Talonair.
Yes.
Parker.
Aye.
Six ayes, no nays. Motion carried.
Item thirty.
Report from the Community and Economic Development Department regarding the sale of city-owned property, parcel zero-nine five zero nine-two, to Charles and Valerie Keel for one dollar plus closing costs.
Move to approve the purchase agreement as recommended, authorize city manager to execute the contract documents, and consider suspend the rules and adopt the ordinance.
Second. Moving to second. Any discussion? Roll call, please.
Alderman Genin.
Aye.
Clark.
Aye.
Mayberry.
Aye.
Spaghetti.
Yes.
Talonair.
Yes.
Parker.
Aye.
Ship.
Aye.
Seven ayes, no nays. Motion carried.
Item thirty-one.
Report from the Community and Economic Development Department regarding the lead-based paint hazard control grant application with the city of Moline.
Move to approve the submission of the grant application as recommended and authorize the signing of the memorandum of understanding.
Second. Moving to second. Any discussion? Roll call.
Alderman Genin.
Aye.
Clark.
Aye.
Mayberry.
Aye.
Spaghetti.
Yes.
Talonair.
Yes.
Parker.
Aye.
Ship.
Aye.
Seven ayes, no nays. Motion carried.
Item thirty-two.
Report from the Finance Department regarding an adjustment to the calendar year two thousand and eighteen budget recommending an increase in the General Fund Public Works in the amount of twelve thousand, seven hundred and forty-eight dollars.
Move to approve the budget adjustment as recommended. Second. Moving to second. Any discussion? Roll call.
Alderman Genin.
Aye.
Clark.
Aye.
Mayberry.
Aye.
Spaghetti.
Yes.
Talonair.
Yes.
Parker.
Aye.
Ship.
Aye.
Seven ayes, no nays. Motion carried.
Item thirty-three.
Report from the Traffic Engineering Committee regarding a request from John Gottiad to install four-way stop signs on Twenty-second Street at its intersection with Sixth Avenue.
Motion to approve the request. Clarify, please. Does that mean? Go ahead, Judith. I would think that that would be going against staff recommendation.
And then, would you like to refer it to the city attorney for an ordinance as well?
So, oh, sure, yes. And refer it to the city attorney for an ordinance, please.
Thank you.
Okay, got a motion. Is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion?
Maybe an explanation for the folks at home, from one of you two?
Somebody wants a stop sign, I give it to them.
Yeah.
You know, it's part of our job. Came from an alderman, he was here a long time before I was. He said, "They want a stop sign? Let them have a stop sign." They live there. Somebody and ten other residents in the area responded, saying that they supported the stop sign. Nobody responded saying they didn't want it, so.
Presumably, eleven people want the stop sign, we should probably give them a stop sign.
Or if one does, my view.
Put one at every intersection, and it would be done with this whole thing.
I agree with you. What the people want, man.
All right, any other discussion? Roll call, please. Oops, nope, all those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Opposed? Passes. Item thirty-four.
Report from the mayor regarding reappointments to the Arts Advisory Committee.
Okay, motion.
Move to approve the reappointments as recommended. Second.
Moving to second. And for discussion, I will read the names of the individuals. Brett Hitchcock has a reappointment, Jody Kavinsky, Carolyn Krueger, Alex McFarland, McFarland, and Tony Sebold. Other individuals. Any other discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Passes. Item thirty-five.
Report from the city clerk regarding a plaza event application from Gilda's Club Quad Cities to hold their two thousand and nineteen Gilda's Club Run for Laughs 5K and One Mile fundraiser on Saturday, April twenty-seventh, two thousand and nineteen, from eight AM to noon, with a street closure of Eighteenth Street between First Avenue and Third Avenue, and with a request for a waiver of the permit fee.
Move to approve the event as, and requests as recommended.
Second. Moving to second. Any discussion?
What is the amount of the permit fee? That they're wanting waived?
Thirty-five dollars.
Okay, thank you.
Ooh, that's gonna, that's gonna break the city budget right there.
Every dollar. All right, no other further discussion? Roll call.
Alderman Genin.
Aye.
Clark.
Aye.
Mayberry.
Aye.
Spaghetti.
Yes.
Talonair.
Yes.
Parker.
Aye.
Ship.
Aye.
Seven ayes, no nays. Motion carried.
Item thirty-six.
Street closing and sound amplification requests, A through D. A, report from the city clerk regarding a request from Levett Johnson to change the date of her street closing and sound amplification permits to Saturday, September fifteenth, two thousand and eighteen, for a community event. B, report from the city clerk regarding requests from the Greater Antioch Baptist Church for a street closing at Tenth Avenue between Fourteenth Street and Fourteenth and a half Street on Saturday, August fourth, two thousand and eighteen, from noon to three PM, and sound amplification for a community event. C, report from the city clerk regarding a request from New Birth of Victory Temple for a street closing at Tenth Street between Sixteenth Avenue and Eighteenth Avenue on Saturday, August eighteenth, two thousand and eighteen, from noon to six PM for a church block party. And D, report from the city clerk regarding a request from South Park Presbyterian Church for a sound amplification permit on Sunday, August fifth, two thousand and eighteen, from seven PM to eight-thirty PM for a concert.
Motion to approve their requests for street closings and sound amplification as recommended for items A through D.
Second. Moving to second. Any discussion? All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Opposed? Carries. We're down to item thirty-seven, other business. And public comment.
I wanted to go back to item nine with the public hearing about the HUD CDBG Annual Action Plan. I just wanted to call attention to the efforts of Chandler Poole and Colleen in the CED Department. Really, just, I, I want to stress that the, the lack of turnout tonight shouldn't reflect the amount of work that has gone into your department's very serious approach in, in being stewards of the dollars, this program, the trust that the government has in the city to do what is required to keep these dollars in this community. And I know it is painstakingly difficult to sometimes get public support and awareness around an acronym. So, kudos to you for doing the work that is required to keep that critical funding coming to the city. So, I just wanted to give you guys that kudos, and for all the other good stuff that we heard about today from your report as well. So, thank you, Chandler.
Yes, Mr. Mayor, I would like for you to comment on it. You and I were there at Liz's twenty-ninth year, was it? Last Thursday, if you would tell the public how great that was.
You know, it was a great function. The weather was a little windy, as you know, but they were celebrating the ADA, American Disability Act, but there was a good number of people there. They were having some fun. There was a number of sponsors there, Blackhawk College and Sherry Bustos Office and Metro Transportation, Metro Link, along with others, I can't remember off the top of my head.
Well, one of the main events was our fire department and our new extension ladder.
That's correct.
Yeah.
Correct, and police, and that, so all down there for, to support it, and the kids love that kind of sort of stuff. There's no doubt about it, and enjoy it. There was, you know, recognition to a number of people, but, you know, that's, it's a, it's a good longstanding event. And so, it was, it was enjoyable. I was my first time going to it, and I enjoyed it, and seeing all the, the kids especially, having some fun.
From the King Center.
Yeah, from the King Center and that sort of thing, but they had, you know, the bouncy houses deal and the slides and some good activities. So, it was, it was, I think, something great by, by, I had by all.
Thank you.
It was a very good event. Celebrating ADA. Anything else? Okay, we have a few people out, audience that would like to speak. Chris Sandak, Cleveland?
I'm gonna set that there, if that's all right?
Sure.
Okay. I have some handouts.
Sure.
There you go. Thanks. In your handouts, there's the doctor's notes, the original one from Augustus's geneticist. The second letter that she sent to Mr. Tweet in reply to his recommendations for life jackets. I made the mistake of assuming that maybe everyone had read them, so now we know that everybody has read them. Mr. Tweet told me after the last meeting that he would continue to work for an agreement, but he has not once called or emailed. John Grip, the director of Parks and Recreation, has yet to ever speak to me, my husband, or my son personally. Since the Illinois Attorney General has announced their investigation, Whitewater Junction now has a brand-new lift for the deep end of the pool and lovely new ropes on their U.S. Coast Guard rinks, so great job in preparing for that investigation. Whitewater Junction has been open for fifty-nine days, and there are twenty-six days left. There is no more neutrality in the world. You either have to be a part of the solution, or you're going to be a part of the problem. Here's some things that the men here today have said to me. There's nothing more I can do. You can speak up for the rights of all people. Staying quiet is contributing to the problem. Let me know if you're not satisfied with the results. I'm not satisfied. I've repeatedly said so, yet you are all set on doing the same thing over and over, and seem to expect a different result. We have bigger fish to fry. To you, this may seem small. To Augustus, this affects his life every day. Nineteen percent of the U.S. population is disabled. While not all of them need swimming accommodations, you have made a clear stance as a Parks and Rec Department and as a city that people with disabilities are limitedly tolerated and certainly not celebrated. One child may seem like a small fish, but I assure you, fish travel in schools, and this is only the beginning. The last thing I've heard is, "I'm sorry." I don't accept "I'm sorry" from my students, and I don't accept it from any of you. I teach a four-step apology that I think you'll find very useful. In your handout is a copy of it, if you'd like to use it later on, but we can review it now. We'll have a poster for you. "I'm sorry for," in this case, it would be discriminating against your son. "This is wrong because it's illegal and morally wrong." "In the future, I will be educated and not make the same mistake again. Will you accept my apology?" Try that next time you want to tell somebody, "I'm sorry." My son heard two things. He heard Virgil say that he could be a competitive swimmer. Thank you for that. And he heard overwhelming silence. He waited for answers to his questions, and every single one of you let him down. You can hide behind closed meetings and be told not to speak by your city attorney. Those closed meeting minutes and recordings will one day be available to the public, and your city attorney has no one's interest in mind but his own. If someone is continually advising you to break the law, I would recommend severing ties with them. If you don't have the courage to stand up for the rights of all people, I recommend resigning from your office.
Thank you. Next on the list was Kristy Key.
Hi, my name is Kristy Key. Ms. Casey, as my children probably know her of, as, because she's a teacher at a school, is a friend of ours, of my family's. Therefore, her husband, her son, and her daughter are friends of ours. If you're a deaf person in this world, you are provided an interpreter. Well, we hope so, anyway. If you're blind, you are provided a dog, or a cane, or somebody else that can assist you safely through your daily life. If you're in a wheelchair, you may also be provided an assistant service animal. All these people are provided some sort of accommodation to help them get through their lives and just live, basically. Gus and all other little people should be allowed accommodations as well. Gus's mother's not looking to send him in with an inflatable ring and then just leave him unattended in the water. She isn't looking for, excuse me, she isn't looking for unreasonable extras for her son. She's simply asking for Whitewater Junction to follow the ADA laws and listen to his doctors to allow Gus to use the only flotation device that they have found that he can physically use to swim in a safe manner. People who have disabilities are simply asking for their independence. An inflatable ring that Gus uses is allowing him his independence, so that he can be just like his sister and have fun in the pool. That's all he asks for. Thank you.
Thank you. Next on the list is Augusta Cleveland.
Hey, pull that down here. There you go.
Tell them to be fired and, uh... Yeah, I'm just thinking. And they won't let me have the Coast Guard ring, Bowie. And... They won't let me have it in the pool. No. And they... And it's Coast Guard approved, and it's a four, and instead of like a five, six, or seven.
Today at the pool, Augustus tried to use his Coast Guard-approved ring, and they told him to take it out of the water because, yes, it is Coast Guard-approved, but today they announced that it needed to be a one, two, three, or five, and a ring is a four. That's the first time we'd heard of it, and the website reflects none of that.
And they let me take it out of the, the water, and I tried, and then they wouldn't let me. And it really is Coast Guard-approved.
Very good. Thank you, Augusta. All right, that's everyone that has signed up. So if there's nothing else for the council, item thirty-eight.
Motion to adjourn.
Moved in second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Passes. Thank you, everybody. Have a good evening. All right.